I did.
Drink color.
Hi, Megan.
Well, I thought we were gonna get cushions.
Yeah, so that counts on me.
Oh, Megan. Do you know the email about can we add Nicole? Do you understand it?
No. Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Cornwall on Hudson Business Meeting for September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. First, I'll make a motion to open our meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's begin with public comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? If you come to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. Does this work? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yeah.
I'm Natalie Wren. I live on Thirty Church Street in the village. It's good to see you all. I've been meaning to stop by just to say hello for the last year because I'm the team leader for Mothers Out Front, the Hudson Highlands Chapter. Hello. I'd love to give a little introduction on what that is since I haven't had a chance to chat with with you, but I do have a reason for speaking tonight, so I'll be brief. So, yeah, I'm a mom of two young boys. I've lived in Cornwall for about five years, and I started a chapter of Mothers Out Front just last year. We started with about three people, and now we are about thirty strong active members plus another thirty-plus supporters, so we're very excited. It's a national climate justice organization. So this is a grassroots movement made up of tens of thousands of members, primarily moms, but also allies. We're mobilizing for a livable climate for our kids. We're nonpartisan. It's a nonprofit. And so our team in Hudson Highlands encompasses members or constituents in the village, in the town, and also in the surrounding towns. So you may have heard of our clothing swaps that we've started, or you may have seen us in local, you know, Riverfest and other local events. We've also been advocating for electric school buses for the school district. So the reason I'm here tonight is to follow up on an email that I sent to three-fifths of you, and I apologize, I didn't have everyone's email, but I did want to send my comments to as many people as I did know. This is to urge the board to join the list of all of the New York City, New York State cities who have written resolutions to oppose the Project Maple, which is the Algonquin Pipeline Expansion. This is a pipeline expansion by Enbridge, which is a Canadian energy conglomerate. It's, I have, I'm happy to share the map. Can I walk around? Can I show it to you?
Sure, sure.
So it starts, it starts somewhere in New Jersey, and this is going up under, through Stony Point where the compressor station is, and then goes around our area and then across the river into Westchester and leading up into New England. So it's connecting oil, natural gas from states that have opened up for fracked gas pipelines and bringing it in to generate electricity in New England. However, there's, they're not dilapidated pipelines. There's no cause. This is really just an expansion for profits. And I'm happy to send our resources and research your way. Essentially, our argument from Mothers Out Front and the other organizations in the area that are pushing for this, this is to urge Governor Hochul to oppose this expansion. The reason is essentially it runs counter to New York's climate goals, and it poses health risks for our kids and for ourselves and for the climate. I'll do really quick. Four points is to, if you're not super familiar, because I wasn't, I'm a musician, super familiar about what gas pipelines do, there, you know, there's greenhouse gases. So methane is a major component of natural gas, and this is eighty times stronger or more dangerous than carbon dioxide, and it's certainly exacerbating the climate crisis and those extreme weather events that we're all experiencing in the region. We also know that methane and the other pollutants that come from pipeline leaks, which pipelines often leak, such as benzene, I don't know the others, but I can look it up for you, they're linked to a lot of health issues, asthma, pulmonary disease, cancer, and so forth. There's also a major concern about cost. So if we are continuing to invest in fossil fuel infrastructure, we're not only paying a lot of money for an inefficient energy, but we're also locking our state into decades and decades of dirty infrastructure that is eventually going to become obsolete as the rest of the country and industries start to really invest in clean energy. The pipeline will no longer be as useful, and the cost will end up on the taxpayers to pay for it. And then, lastly, I just, basically, it's risky, it's unnecessary, and it's completely out of step with with our goals. So what can we do in Cornwall on Hudson? I've sent a proposed resolution, and by all means, we can rewrite it or, you know, adjust it to better reflect what the board is comfortable with, but this is a resolution that is reflective of, I think, Rockland County's resolution. Some of the other cities that have passed resolutions that go up to Governor Hochul include Crotone on Hudson, North Salem, Hastings on Hudson, Tarrytown, Austing Village and Town. And my next stop in a week or so will be the Cornwall Town Board. What else did I want to share with you? The last thing I wanted to say was, you know, Cornwall with its rich legacy of environmental advocacy and leadership, I think we do need to take a stand here. I think it's pretty easy and straightforward to do. It's not a partisan issue. This is just protecting our communities and our natural resources. And there is always a concern of, you know, a pipeline like this negatively impacting property values and our open spaces and so forth. So if you have any questions, please feel free to send me an email, or I can follow up offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? Seeing none? Let's move on to, we're skipping approval of the meeting minutes because I have to finish looking at those, so let's move on to the monthly department reports. I'll start with the treasurer's report for August twenty twenty-five. So the monthly water report for the village was two hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. For the town, it was two hundred and ninety-one thousand and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-two cents totaling five hundred and forty-six thousand and sixty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. And warrant number nine in the amount of six hundred and forty-six thousand five, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. The year-to-date revenue expenditure report is, by fund, is as follows. The general revenue, general fund revenue was four million two hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, with expenditures amounting to two million five hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. As for the water fund revenue, that amounted to one million nine hundred and nine thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents, and the expenditures amounted to one million three hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. As for the sewer fund revenue, it was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars and fifty-eight cents, and the expenditures amounted to one hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. The total receipts amounted to six million four hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents, which equates to about, close to seventy percent in anticipated revenues. Okay, as for expenditures, it was four million one hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, which equates to about forty-seven percent in anticipated expenditures through August. The balance collected for the sewer capital is five hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and ninety-six, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty cents through August. The total taxes collected through August were two million nine hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents, which amounts to ninety-six percent. Some notes, all right, our night class interest year-to-date as of August thirty-first, by fund, the average monthly year, monthly yield is four point one three three five percent. In general, that amounts to twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents for water, twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, and sewer, thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents, and the fire department general, two thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents. And that's from our village treasurer. Megan, does anyone have any questions for Megan?
No.
All right, moving on to the building department bill. Trusty Brain?
Shirley. Village of Cornwall on Hudson Building Department report for August twenty twenty-five. Building permits issued thirteen, certificates of compliance or occupancy issued five, onsite inspections seventeen, violations four, stop work orders one, municipal searches one, solar panels one, and fire inspections three. Manny A. Carmona, code enforcement officer.
Any questions for Manny? Or Manny, anything to highlight? Okay, any questions for Manny? All right.
Are violations being handled, or these are?
This, yeah, the stop work order, didn't we ask that the last time?
Yeah, there was one stop work order. Somebody started work properly, but then they did a lot more than they were supposed to. I happened to see it as I was walking by. I walked within, did inspection, and gave them a stop work order.
Okay.
Until they provided the plans, the fees, and all the other.
And in regard to the violations, Manny, is this in addition to, is this separate from sixty-nine Deer Hill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Four separate locations or one location?
Four separate locations, yes. Some of them grass.
Okay. All right. Right, I pointed, yeah, yes, that's right. I advise you, one of the, one of the locations is the old garage across the street from...
Shayana.
Shayana. The other one was the music shop, right? Was that one of them, Manny?
The music shop as well. One on, either Wild Park Drive or Trash was another one.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Any other, any, any questions for Manny? Okay, very good. Moving on to the fire department, that is Deputy Mayor Dave Carnery.
Okay, Village of Cornwall on Hudson Board of Fire Commissioners, August twenty twenty-five, Okay. Village of Cornwall-on-Hudson Board of Fire Commissioners, August 2025, department report. Categories: Automatic alarms, seven, drills, eight, EMS calls, eight, meetings, two, motor vehicle accidents, one, mutual aid standby requests, one, odor investigations, two, structure fires, one, training, three, wires down, one. Total voluntary hours, two-hundred-and-twenty-two, total events, thirty-four. We answered a hundred percent of our calls at zero personnel costs to the village. The structure fire was a mutual aid call for Tower Ladder 413 to the city of Newburgh. Firefighter Matt Wilhelm completed firefighter self-rescue training. We are available to answer any questions about the tower ladder replacement. We're eagerly awaiting the approval of the training stipend, and we wish to keep the SCBA replacement conversion current.
Conversation, yeah.
Any questions for the fire department? All right. Moving on to the police department. That's Trustee Paleota.
Monthly police report, August 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2025. Four hundred total calls for service. Felonies, we have zero felonies. Misdemeanors, violations, one fraud, one petty larceny, one harassment, aggravated harassment. Under arrest, we have one misdemeanor. Again, no felonies, no violations, no warrant arrest for COH PD or others. Vehicle traffic, personal injury accidents, one, property damage accidents, three, traffic summons issued, thirty-one. Traffic warnings issued, fourteen, parking summons issued, two. Traffic enforcement posts, eight, speed radar sign postings, three. Noncriminal activity, fire response calls, ten, domestic incidents, two, alarm response calls, three, noise complaints, two, suspicious incident calls, eight, animal complaints, five, disorderly person calls, one. Departmental assists, assists town of Cornwall, seventeen, EMS, fifteen. Other agencies, one, other police agencies, one, welfare check, two, citizens, zero, other COH departments, zero. During the month of August 2025, Cornwall-on-Hudson PD applied for approximately $1,750 in grant funding from the NRA, National Rifle Association. This grant funding would be utilized for COH PD officer firearms training ammunition. During the month of August 2025, Cornwall-on-Hudson PD participated in Orange County Stop DWI Traffic Enforcement Grant Funding, respectfully Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Is it worth taking a minute to talk about noise complaints on Bayview and speed complaints on Bayview?
Fine, yeah.
If you?
Yeah.
Just, I know we've had the state police posted there, as well as our own COH PD at Bayview Avenue, sort of by the gate there. We continue to get complaints to the board about loud motorcycles and speed and stuff like that. So I know we're doing, we're posting probably as much as we can, right? I think just, everybody's sort of wondering about solutions for 218 and the, and the noise that happens and the speed that happens in the village beyond that. And, I don't know, any thoughts? Is there any, you know, from my house, which is not near there, I hear those motorcycles at night a lot. I don't know. Any thoughts, or?
I mean, as always, we could step up enforcement, but a lot of times, in these type of situations, it's being at the right place at the right time. Typically, I'll have an officer in the area anywhere from a half hour to an hour on post, looking for either speeding vehicles, loud vehicles, et cetera. So unless I post an officer there for eight hours, again, you got to be at the right place at the right time. And there's other duties and obligations and post checks that we have to perform in the village as well. So we do our best to be diligent.
And I asked just to advise the board, the chief and I spoke about this a few days ago, or yesterday, chief, I can't remember, Saturday or Sunday. And we were talking about the purchase of decibel meters for each of the vehicles. This is one of these, this vehicle and traffic law was amended back in 2022. The, the law was, was passed, was really focused on the installation and the modification of exhaust systems on vehicles. The secondary portion of it was the enforcement of the loud, of the loud noise. What, what the, what the law did not provide for was the police department, funding for police department for decibel meters. Am I saying they're very expensive? They're probably not. I was asking chief to look into that, which he's doing. The, one of the problems, one of the problems with the law is, is that you can, the officer can use the decibel meter, or right now, without one, I don't even know how they do it, but it's based on a comparison between what, what they were driving at the decibel and what the original equipment installation of the muffler was. Right. So in order to enforce it, you issue that, you know, you issue a ticket for it, then you got to go to court, and then the police officer, we have to prove, okay, well, on that vehicle, this was the, this was the, the muffler that was installed on that for that year vehicle, and this is what the decibel should be, that should come out of that, that muffler, and so forth. I'm just pointing out, I'm just pointing it out to the board, because it's, it seems simple, but it's a little bit more complicated to enforce. That being said, as I said, chief's looking into purchasing, or maybe getting some funding to purchase the decibel meters. And I think the answer is, is that, once we get them, we can, we will do our best to have the police officers enforce them. I mean, look, could we do some static ones that we do at the same time as we do some static posts for speeding, you know, coming off of 218? Yes, that can be in addition to. But I think right now, without a decibel meter, your, your guess is as good as mine as how loud it is. I mean, I don't know.
And the, and the driver is going to say, well, I passed my vehicle past inspection.
May I also?
Yes.
It also requires training in the use of the decibel, decibel meter, as well as proper calibration of said decibel instrument, similar to DWI equipment, where you have to prove proper calibration.
Yes. But regardless, that's, those are the intricacies of it. But regardless, at this point, at least we'll have the chief take a look at how much these are, and you come back to us, advise us. And you're right, you know, at the same time, Trustee Galliano brings up a good point, and that is, okay, the calibration, find out how much that's going to be, because just like the, the breathalyzer needs to be calibrated, like, at least on a monthly basis, from what I remember from my time in the DA's office. So, so if you could find that out, if you could find that out, chief, and there's any additional funding. But, look, we're, we're taking our first step towards what we can do. So any, any other discussion in regards to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. I just want to, on a lighter note.
Yes.
I just want to recognize, Ron Zane, he's a retired New York City detective. He lives in the town, and organized a first responder recognition mass at St. Thomas's past Sunday in New York, which other we saw as well. I attended it.
Sir.
I just very appreciate what it was for. First responders, nurses, firefighters.
You guys are losers.
And I was also privileged to have breakfast following that, the Paleota family.
Well, thank you, Trustee Paleota.
That was well worth the wait.
It sure was.
Attending that mass and the breakfast afterwards. Chief, if you could send that gentleman a thank you letter, if you want me to sign it, I'll go ahead and do so. But thank you, and thank you for attending that on behalf of the Cornwall-on-Hudson Police Department. All right. Moving on to the Public Works Department. Trustee Brain?
Village of Cornwall-on-Hudson, Department of Public Works, August 2025. Trash collected for the month? We don't yet have that figure. Recycling collected for the month, nineteen-point-eight-one tons. Yard waste collected for the month, one hundred yards. Repairs and maintenance of village-owned equipment, vehicles and equipment. Blacktop was patched. Maintenance of village-owned properties was conducted. The streets were swept. Sewer main backup from Avenue A, Paula Court, Jean Court to Currie Road. Painted no parking areas on Churchill Street. Sidewalks were replaced on Bayview Avenue. They are now ADA compliant. And the department made drainage improvements in the rear of the firehouse parking lot. Notes: Fall bulk cleanup is set, bless you, for October 20th. Superintendent Halverson will be attending NICOM's Public Works School in Lake George from October 5th through 8th, along with working leader Wayne Yeoman. And the tonnage reports are not available as of the date of this report. David Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Dave, what was the name of the gentleman who, with the sewer backup on Avenue A?
What number Avenue A?
I can't remember now.
No, he wasn't on Avenue A. Am I getting?
From Avenue A, it says here.
Jean Court, right. I can't, I can't remember his name. Nice, nice gentleman. He had inquired, I just, the name escapes me, but he had inquired in regards to the backup, because some work was done on the sewer in front of his house a few years ago. The village fixed that, and he would mistakenly thought that that portion of the sewer system backed up again. He had made a complaint about it. The reason why I bring it up is because after we advised him, I met with him, actually, Dave, the superintendent, Dave Halverson, advised him, then I met with him, and he was very, very, he was very gracious. He, he understood that, that it was a mistake, that it wasn't, it wasn't the work that we had done in front of his house on the sewer, on the sewer line. It was caused by somewhere else. So he was gracious and apologetic, and I enjoyed my conversation with him. And he completely understands the miles of system we have and what we have to undertake in order to keep the system moving, so to speak. So, for the life of me, I just can't think of his name. No, no, it's not that.
On that note.
Yeah.
The reason why we had that plug up there and the other one that we had this past month were all due to baby wipes.
Ah.
Get you every time.
Yeah.
They have a tendency to get clogged in the main if there's any obstruction whatsoever. One of them, the next one, makes it a reason, time, but eventually it'll choke it off.
Got it. All right. Any, any questions, Dave?
This is a, possibly a dumb question, because I'm sure I know the answer, but the benching project that we were doing over in Homeland as well.
That was right in front of his house.
Yeah, okay, but not related, not an issue. And we did that. It's all conducted, all complete. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. I'm actually just quickly looking for if I can find his name. Can't. All right. Apologies for that. So moving on to, we get the water department. So Trustee Galliano, please.
Village of Cornwall-on-Hudson Water Department, August 2025, monthly report. Monthly production is at 26,973,000 gallons. The daily average is 870,000 gallons. Samples, the water department collected forty samples in accordance with DOH regulations. Treatment, routine operations and maintenance. Transmission and distribution, ninety-eight utility markouts were completed. They completed four water service shut-offs slash turn-ons at owners' requests. They repaired two curb valve boxes, and they completed Hasbrook Avenue Water Main Project. Meters, they read all commercial water meters. Thirteen final water meeting readings were completed. Nine residential water meters replaced. One water line inspection was completed. Property maintenance, they did routine property maintenance. Notes: Main Street Bridge Water Main Improvement Project was completed for a total cost of $191,064.34, and the final cost, I'm happy to report, was nineteen percent or $44,905.66 under budget. Additional cost savings were realized by coordinating this project with Orange County DPW and the bridge contractor Transit-Helmar. This project was paid for through the water funds capital improvement budget without the need to borrow any additional funding. And this is respectfully submitted by Michael P. Traynor, Senior Water Superintendent.
Okay. All right. Anything for Mike, Superintendent Traynor? All right. Very good. Moving on, the New Windsor EMS report. Deputy Mayor Carnright.
Okay. Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, Town of Windsor, Town of Cornwall, Village of Cornwall. Windsor EMS report for August 2025. Personnel, three new volunteers, one minor back injury reported, employees back to work. Call volume, three hundred and sixty-three calls, a hundred percent in district response rate. Response times, New Windsor, seven minutes, four seconds, Cornwall, six point two, six minutes, twenty seconds, and Cornwall-on-Hudson, seven minutes and eight seconds. Call volume per location, New Windsor, two twenty-eight, Cornwall, seventy-nine, Cornwall-on-Hudson, sixteen, Town of Highlands, twenty. Five for Blooming Grove, five for Woodbury, seven for the city of Newburgh, and three for the town of Newburgh. Operations, West Point Army contract was renewed. Ten New Windsor EMS staff members will be attending the National EMS Conference in Indianapolis this October. No vehicle accidents, two ambulances sent for repairs, all are in service. One car, fly car on sale is surplus. UTV was sold to Beacon Fire Department. We will still have one in service. Cornwall Fund Drive was sent out last week. Twenty twenty-six budget being completed. Cornwall funding is set at $480,000 for one ALS ambulance for 2026, twenty-one percent increase.
All right. Any question?
Submitted by Michael Big Chief.
Any question for Mike? I will relay them to him. I'll give him a ring.
Just that last line, 2026 budget is being completed. Cornwall funding is set at $480,000 for one ALS ambulance for 2026. The $480,000 is the contracted rate that we agreed on for the annual cost with them, right?
I'd actually have to check that.
I'm just confused about the relationship between that number and the ambulance.
Yeah. I will find out from Mike.
Okay, thanks. Confused by that bullet.
Okay. All right. Moving on. So our first resolution, so Dave Halverson, our, I was about to say water, our DPW superintendent was looking for us to do a budget line transfer in regards to $200,000 for the Mountain Road resurfacing. Dave, do you just want to give a quick explanation?
Sure. When Central Hudson did the gas line work in the village on Mountain Road, Deer Hill Road, and such, we came to an agreement, because it was just after and during the July night storm, for them to resurface the areas while we were still fixing stuff didn't make sense. So I bargained with them and negotiated with them, and they made a payment of $200,000 for us for restoration work for those two roads. And we were able to use that money today.
To do the fiber matter.
Work on Deer Hill Mountain.
Okay.
So that we don't use our chips on, which we're only allowed to use on a road with a ten-year service life. You can buy something for ten, with a ten-year service life.
Right.
So if we were going to do more work on Mountain Road, we couldn't spend chips money on it, and then use more chips money in the next couple of years. So this, this works out that next year, when we get our construction going, we can wrap the FEMA, USDA money, and chips money all in, and not hurt the village taxpayers to get those roads paved.
Okay.
We should be able to cover it that way.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Any questions, Dave?
Yeah. So the, the $200,000 payment we got from Central Hudson went into the general fund, into the fund balance?
It was, it was put into a separate account when it came in, so it would be put to the side for this reason. Now that has to be transferred back. It has to be a budget line amendment. It has to be a budget line amendment for our operating fund and increase it by that much, which will also increase the revenue by that much as well, by moving it over.
Separate year.
Should be net zero.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
So pursuant to that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the deputy village treasurer to decrease line A 599, which is fund balance, to the amount of $200,000 and increase the line of A 5110.430, the Central Hudson repave line, in the amount of $200,000 for Mountain Road, et cetera, resurfacing. Before, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
While you're on that.
Yes.
You were out and about today. I'm sure anybody was here. So all the vehicles that were here, we had assistance from other municipalities as well to help keep that cost down. We had Town of Cornwall, New Windsor, Blooming Grove, Chester, Tuxedo, Montgomery, and I'm forgetting somebody.
Yeah.
We had, we had a lot of help from other municipalities doing the trucking in for us.
I saw it.
Because most of our guys had to do flagging and traffic control because Mountain Road is so wonderful to work.
Yes. Well, we appreciate that. And I saw them this morning as I was walking my two dogs. And it was like a convoy of them coming, coming down the street. So please thank them on our behalf. And again, if you want to send a letter, if you want, you want to sign it, you want me to sign it, I'd be happy to do so.
Absolutely. It's one of the things that the DPWs and highway departments do.
Very good.
Help each other out like that.
Excellent. All right. Moving on to the audit. So our, our auditors are Nugent and Housler. And each year we do at least a compilation audit. And every, every other year we do a full audit. So this upcoming year, we have a compilation audit. So I'm going to make a motion to approve Nugent and Houser PC to perform a year-end compilation for the year ending February 2026 at a cost of $14,000. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the residential damage claim. Okay. Mike, I think, oh, excuse me, the water rate study. That's right. Sorry. The water rate study. So many months ago, Mike reached out, actually over an extended period of time, for solicitation for a water rate study. And in the beginning, I think we had one response, then there was two responses. Did we, didn't get more? Did we get more than two, Mike? Or was just?
We did get a third, but it was for a cloud-based program.
Right. And one of the companies was called Water Financing.
Assistance.
Assistance. And the other ones were Reftellus. If you recall, the Reftellus proposal was very comprehensive. It included enormous, not enormous amount, but, but covered everything. If Mike, if you want to hit some of the highlights as you're doing that, I'll grab the report. I just wanted, what I wanted to do is I wanted to compare it to the Water Financing one, which was much lighter in regards to what it was covering.
Yeah. So Reftellus proposal was $49,000. It included many tasks, which included a representative coming down to the village, visiting our offices, obtaining financial reports from the treasurer's office, operating costs from our office, and then going back and doing an analysis of everything. And then taking a look at the water district and seeing what the actual cost to serve is for different industries or commercial properties or residential properties, as well as out-of-district users. That was Reftellus, $49,000. The Water Finance Assistance Program, they offered theirs for $31,000, but theirs was not as comprehensive in the fact that it didn't, it didn't include a task, which is called Cost to Serve, which Reftellus did. And when we tried to, to get a firm number from Water Finance Assistance on that Cost to Serve, particularly to determine an appropriate rate to charge our out-of-district users, they could only give us a price, it would be up to $45,000 additional. So if it was that full 45,000 plus a 31, we would have been at 76,000. There's no telling, it, it could have been a little bit less, maybe much more. So Reftellus seems to be the one that's inclusive and they're able to give us a firm, a firm number. They've also done work in the city of Newburgh, and they do this nationwide.
And in fact, Mike, as we were speaking before the meeting, Reftellus has represented 1,700 local government agencies and utilities across the US, which was much, much more than the other company. Just to point out some of the things that Mike had, some of them he stated, is they, they're doing one, they're forecasting their revenue requirements, and they'll customize a financial plan. They'll do a cost of service evaluation. They'll do a rate analysis and projections, prepare rate, rate structure alternatives. And in fact, it'll be two alternatives. And then they'll do the report and presentation of results. And the last thing is our water committee has looked at this.
Correct.
And they recommend.
Yeah. They recommend Reftellus. The water rates, as everyone knows, is a hot button topic. People want to know why a town pays more, residents of the town pay more than the village. So our local joint committee, which is made up of village representatives and town representatives, they, they earmarked the rate studies a priority for them. As you all know, back in the 1980s, the, the rates were, were set based upon just a, a property tax calculation that the town assessor had made. It didn't take into account any type of factual information about the water system itself. Committee, we met with both Reftellus and Water Finance, and we felt that Reftellus was the best bang for your buck.
Okay. All right. Pursuant to that, I am going to make a motion to approve the purchase of the water rate study by Reftellus at a cost of $49,000, as presented in their offer of August 26, 2025. May I have a?
And I would just, just note for the record that it's a professional service. That makes it exempt from the New York State bidding requirements. And as a professional service, the board's free to go forward to approve the contract.
To that point, if I may, we did reach out seven different contracts.
Right. I forgot, yeah. Okay. So I'll amend my motion. I'll make the motion again. Make a motion to approve the water rate study by Reftellus at the cost of $49,000, noting, based upon their proposal dated August 26, 2025, this is a professional service, is exempt from the New York State bidding requirements. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
When will this commence, Mark?
I'll have to, I'll make contact with them tomorrow and find out if they're available.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
It's not going to be a, a quick study. It'll take them six months.
Okay. All right. Moving on. All right. The residential water claim. What am I looking at here? Okay. And that is, Mike, why don't you tell us a little bit about that one?
So we had a resident contact our office. They live over in the town, I believe it's 140 Harold Avenue.
136.
I'm sorry.
136.
So they, they sustained some damage to their finished basement and to rug, the padding under the rug as well as the sheet rock from a leaking water meter. And when we went over there, we responded as soon as they called us. And we, we found what we believed to be the cause was a defective water meter washer, a leather water meter washer. It's recently, the meter had recently been installed. The homeowner doesn't use that, that space too often, so they didn't notice it right away. And under village code, we're responsible for the maintenance of the water meter.
Okay. Any questions, Mike?
Just that the, note that the homeowner is requesting compensation just for his own labor, or rather, for the materials. It wasn't his labor. Sorry. Let me rephrase. He's just asking for out-of-pocket expenses reimbursed, not any other kind of anything else. He had made a note of that in his note to us, which I don't see here.
Okay. All right. I will make a motion to authorize the payment, the amount of $2,750 for water damage located at, at property 136 Harold Avenue, Cornwall, New York, 125018. May I have a second, please? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on, the Orange County Water Authority, in conjunction with the Cornwall Central School District, wants to go down to our waterfront on September, excuse me, September 26, October 1st, 3rd, 8th, 9th, and 15th, with the children from Cornwall Central School District. And they're looking for us to waive the parking fee, and if they use the pavilion, the associated pavilion fee. They do this, I think they do this annually, if I'm not mistaken.
Because Kyle Wasey's at a service.
Oh, that's right. It's still?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a mo, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Orange County Water Authority field trip for the Cornwall Central School District and to waive all associated fees at Donahue Park on September 26, October 1st, 3rd, 8th, 9th, and 15th. May I have a second? Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, the Color Bash Special Event. Trustee Galliano, would you like to, Galliano, would you like to describe that?
Certainly. So this is our third or fourth, Lori Beth, annual.
Fourth.
Fourth annual Cornwall Color Bash. It was held last year at Donahue Farm. It was a successful event. This year, we are looking to hold it at noon on October, it's 2 o'clock. 2 o'clock, thank you. Sorry. 2 o'clock on October 19th. We did recently switch the date, so my apologies. It, it is a, as you would think, it's a run for free. There's no admission, there's no cost. And color packets are thrown on the runners as they run. And it's been a very successful event, hence the fourth annual.
How long is it again? It's a short run, right? Is it just a mile?
It's like 1.5.
Under a mile and a half. Yeah. It's just slightly under a mile and a half.
Okay. All right.
1.4 or something.
Any questions for trustee Galliano?
No.
All right. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the Sunday, October 19th, 2025 Color Bash Road Race. The insurance and appropriate documentation have been received. And this event's going to occur at what time again?
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So moving on to additional filming. So as we've said before, Doc in the Box has been using our waterfront a bit, as well as the Cornwall Yacht Club, to do some of their filming for a TV series named Best Medicine, which apparently is going to be aired in the springtime. They were here in August. They spent a few days last week. The remaining days are tomorrow and September 16th and 17th. And then the following days would be September 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
I mean, October.
No. September, yeah. There, there's definitely a possibility they're coming back in, in October. So previously, in regards to, a lot of the time, most, most of the time, they're just using our, our parking down at Donahue Park. They've been, I have to say, they've been very, very responsive when I receive a complaint from the police department or from DPW or whomever, or a resident there. I text my point of contact, Akeem Green, Green Hut and, and Austin. They're very, very responsive to that, so I appreciate that. We're making a decent fee off of this. So previously, let's see, the last week, we charged them, it was $1,250 for use of the Donahue Park where the parking was. And then for when they filmed on, off of Shore, not Shore, excuse me, River Avenue, and we had to, not close river and shore, but we had intermittent traffic. With the help of the police department, thank you much, chief, the fee was about 40, was $4,500. So we have, so they're going to be doing some more filming. They're going to be doing some of the film, one day of the film is going to be on, on, actually at the park in the, in the grassy area, the one closer to the Cornwall Yacht Club. So what I'd like to do, as I did last time, is I would like to make a motion to approve the auto, audio visual permit for the name of the company's Doc in the Box Corporation, aka Best Medicine, to film in the vicinity of Donahue Park on September 16th, 17th, 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And with respect to the fee, the fee would be the $1,250 for use of the, the parking areas, if it totally includes both the large area and the narrow strip that's closest to the railroad track. And I would also ask that the board approve, permit the mayor to negotiate a fee for the use of the grassy area in Donahue Park. So I will ask for a second to that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to part-time office clerk. So we had, if you remember, we had, actually, there were two people that were essentially kind of replacing. We had Barbara, who was our records management person, and Susan, who also left. She was part, she was a part-timer. She moved down to Florida, if I remember correctly. So after discussing it with our deputy village clerk, Megan, right next to me here, we've determined that we do need another part-timer for about four hours a day, and we're looking for that person to fill in between 10:30 and 2:30. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's to cover the period, particularly the periods when the front office is at lunch. So any discussion on that? Okay. I will make a motion to authorize the deputy village clerk, Megan Gishwin, to advertise for a part-time office clerk position. So this is just advertising. The salary is to be determined at a future date. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The overnight parking, so I have the information on that. Hold on, hold on. Just bear with me a minute. All right. Here we go. So this overnight parking is for October 23rd. So this relates to the Seneca Chief. So the Buffalo Maritime Center constructed a traditional built, traditionally built, full-size replica of the Erie Canal boat, Seneca Chief. That opened when the Erie Canal opened in 18, excuse me, was built in 1825, when the Erie Canal was, was built. On September 24th, the Seneca Chief will depart and then head down into New York Harbor. And on the way, it's going to stay in, it's going to stop at the Cornwall Yacht Club. I spoke to Steve Lonchanot from the Yacht Club. And in fact, the, the individual who represents this bicentennial voyage had contacted the village in regards to securing some parking spaces on that day. But we returned her call and we haven't heard anything back from her. So we're anticipating they need to use October 23rd for parking. The, the, the Seneca Chief, as I said, is going to be moored at the Cornwall Yacht Club, according to Steve Lonchanot. They'll be there for several hours and They'll be there for several hours and there will be the ability for people to go on and actually enter the, enter, enter the Seneca Chief. So it's a great, it's a great idea. They're stopping at many, many places. We just happen to be one of the places along the way. In fact, there's 28 places that they're stopping at. And the last two before they hit New York City is Cornwall and Hudson, Austining, and then it's New York City. So, that being said, I will make a motion, or any discussion on that? Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the overnight parking at Dunahue Memorial Park on October 2020, excuse me, October 23, 2025, for the Maritime Buffalo Center, as the Erie Canal Boat Seneca Chief is projected to dock in Cornwall and Hudson at the Cornwall Yacht Club on October 23rd. So we're looking to waive any fees associated with the parking for that day. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, next up was the Amistad plaque placement. We had the Cornwall Yacht Club provided us with the plaque they had dedicated to the Amistad, which right now sits outside, it's kind of a breakwater structure outside the Cornwall Yacht Club. It's a very nice plaque. We, the, the board considered several places to put it. One, we considered up on Grandview, because you could actually see from there. That's a tight area to put it. You're lucky if you can fit one or two cars. The other was down near the flagpole at Dunahue Park with the two boulders that are dedicated to the Storm King, to Storm King. And then we settled on the area that's about 75 feet from the shelter gazebo, where right now, an Eagle Scout had, a few years ago, had built a kiosk that included a display of the native fish, birds, and reptiles, right? In the, in the Moon to Creek area. So, species in the, in the Moon to Creek area. So Dave and I went down there. It already has, it already has a roof on it. So Dave and I discussed it and it would be a nice place to just, we can all fix it to that kiosk without disturbing the Eagle Scout's kiosk, the inside of it. This would be placed on the outside and you would, you would see it. The question is, and I showed, I showed the board members where, where we should put it. So we could put it on the side, which you would see when you walk down the sidewalk to the, to the shelter. Or we can put it on the back end of the kiosk, where you would see it if you're driving either way. But I open for discussion, does anybody have any input in regards to which, which location on the kiosk you think would be best?
I would defer to the Mr. Alveson on that.
Agreed.
What one you think was
Likewise.
I'm sorry. What location did you, do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference, but I was thinking the backside, myself. So it's actually facing Shore Road.
Yeah.
Instead of the side.
True. Oh, now I see what you're saying, Dave, because then you could be looking down to kinda where, where this, where this was. Okay, kinda, I mean, if, yes.
Little, little less UV too, right? That's a little more shaded, you wouldn't, it wouldn't get UV damages as fast, I think.
We're gonna have to do something to close it as well. I told the mayor, I said, we didn't close it, ni, we're plastic glass.
It's already got a cover on.
So, you know what, we'll, I'll just make them, I'm gonna make the motion so we can put it there. What we're gonna do is, I know Kathleen Christensen, our historian, would like to have a little ceremony when we, when we, when we do this. But first, Dave's got a few things to do, and that is prepare for it to be displayed so it's weatherproof as best as possible. So I would say that we'd probably install it sometime in maybe late October after, and I can announce it at our work session next month. Okay, very good. So I'll make a motion to authorize the placement of the Amistad plaque to be located near the reptile amphibian display kiosk. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Moving on, other business, pollen, the pollinator corridor where our pathway, that's near our Cornwall and Hudson sign. I've been in touch with Kate Krimsky and she advised me, at the work session, I advised that I promised them another $500 for additional plants to be included. She told me that One Nature is still holding on to the plants that we previously purchased, because we moved some of the boulders around. She advised me that the additional plants will cost about $420. And she did not tell me when, at this point, when they're going to plant.
I'll find out next week.
Okay, so we, we can announce that. But I just want to make sure that everyone knows that that is going to, that is going to happen. So we'll have about $1,500 worth of native plants to be planted in the, in that area. Moving on to the peace pole. So as part of our Military Banner program, which is spearheaded by Regina McRae from the Greater Newburgh Rotary Club, which includes the town of Cornwall and Cornwall and Hudson. She, they donated a peace pole, both to the village and the town. And they had, she had reached out to us several weeks ago and asked us, you know, they'd like to donate it and where would we like to put it. So Dave and I, we looked at a few areas. We were trying to stay away from Dunahue Memorial Park, because we have nice things down there already. We don't wanna add too much more. It's a nice passive park, has an excellent view. So we ended up choosing Pageant Stacker Park. The only thing that's located at Pageant Stacker Park is the sign and the boulder that has the plaque on it. And I showed the, I showed the board, so when you're going down Dock Hill Road, the peace pole, which is about eight feet high, it'll have the Cornwall and Hudson emblem and, and it'll have some wording, and I have the picture. The picture. In a few, potentially a few different languages, "May Peace Prevail on Earth." And it's being donated by them. The only thing we have to do is install it. So when you're going down Dock Hill Road, it would be toward the end of Pageant Stacker Park, off, a bit off the roadway. So you can see it on your way down, you can see it on your way up. And it is, and if you wanted to stop, you know, there's some parking spaces at Pageant Stacker Park. And we just have to determine where we're gonna put it in. And I'm sure Regina, I spoke to Regina about it, and she'd like to have a little presentation when we, when we do that. So again, that one, Dave, will have to figure out the timing on that.
Town's doing
When you have it, yes. In fact, she told me, I'll call, I'll call her, she said she can deliver it.
The town's doing theirs too. I don't know exactly when they're doing theirs.
Yeah, I thought, did they pick their place?
Yes.
I think they picked River Light Park, correct, yes. All right. So just in case, I'll make the motion to approve placing the peace pole, donated by the Greater Newburgh Rotary Club to the village of Cornwall and Hudson, to be placed in Pageant Stacker Park sometime in the October timeframe. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Prior to installation, I would like us to be informed of exactly what it's going to say on all, I think trustee Brain said there's eight sides. And I would also like to know the languages prior to installation and for what it actually says to be approved by the board. But the installation at the park is, is, I'm on board with the, the location of the installation.
Language, wait, it was language, trustee Galliano, and
So what languages and what exactly will it say?
Right.
You know, does it say just one thing, but in seven other languages? Or does it say different messaging?
No, I think that's what it is.
I think they consistently say, "May, may peace prevail on earth," translated across languages.
I don't know if you get a plaque with it or not, too, because
She didn't mention, she, yeah, she didn't mention, she didn't mention the plaque.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, sidewalk replacement. So last week, Dave Alveson presented us sidewalk replacement plan for Idyllwiddel, Idyllwiddel Avenue, which goes around, starts, starts at the, starts actually on Churchill.
Starts on River Avenue.
Oh, I'm going the other way around, right, okay. You start on River Avenue near Pepetini, where there, where that, not willow tree, it's a locust tree, right? Right around there, going around the front of Storm King Lounge and Fair, down Idyllwiddel Avenue, making a right onto Churchill Street. That sidewalk needs to be replaced. And Dave came to us to discuss the possibility about the, the trees, they are removing the trees and possibly replacing them with, with something else. Not necessarily trees, but with planters that are, that have flowers in them, donated by the owner of Storm
Something that's not going to lift the sidewalks.
Right, right. So what we did is, I asked each one of the, the board members to go down and take a look at the sidewalks and the, and the trees. There were some, there was, Dave had mentioned some issues about ADA compliance. In any case, I asked the board members to take a look. So I'd asked the board members now to express your thoughts and what, what you, what you think.
I'll go, if you don't mind. So I went down just this afternoon. I took a look, walked around. I understand the concerns that you articulated about getting ADA compliance where there's outdoor seating. I did notice that the only outdoor seating right now, and I'm also gonna note as, as a patron of the, of Storm King Lounge, that they don't serve food outside. Occasionally, I'll see somebody sitting outside, you know, sitting in one of the two chairs with a table. That table happens to be between the two trees. I think you said they're locust trees.
Yes.
And there is ample sidewalk there. I'll also note that if they were to add more, there are some other tables, if you're facing Storm King Lounge, to the left-hand side, but there's no chairs with those tables at this time. If they were to introduce outdoor seating, assuming that that's compliant with code and permissions, there's no trees there. And there's plenty, half of a block almost, to, to add tables and chairs. That's, those were my observations. I keep the trees, is my
Trustee Paleota, thank you.
I also looked at the trees. And I, I feel like they're, they're much larger than I thought, than when I just walk by. But when I took a minute and looked at them, I feel like they give so much shade and so much character over there. And like I said, they're a lot bigger and older than I thought. So I'm gonna, I, I think that we can keep them for, for longer, you know? Let them kind of live out a little bit more. And then if they become a, like a bigger problem that, that we can't ignore, then, then I would say make a change. But for right now, I'm keeping the trees.
Trustee Brain.
Echoing what both of the other trustees just said, I think, you know, locust trees in particular grow back from, from heavy cutting. So if we need to prune to ensure that they're not dropping branches or anything, I think that's, that's important. There's, you know, the, the tightest one is the one closest to Pepetini, where the Belgian block has been put in around the base. And we had talked, I think the mayor might actually address his thoughts on that, which I agree with. But yeah, I'm, I'm gonna keep the trees. I think they're, you know, we should think about what a plan might be for removing one at a time over the course of the next decade or, you know, less if necessary, so that we rotate them in, so that we have a mature tree coming in, in those spaces over time. But in the meantime, I think, just make sure there's no branches dropping would be the primary thing for me.
I have, I have a question.
No, you can't have a question.
Is this, Dave, in conjunction with the Storm King, not Lounge Theater, just got its approval? We, we talked about that at the planning board and they were gonna make some sidewalk, potentially install sidewalks? Are these, are the, that's only in the back, are these two projects connected? Okay. You were gonna connect to that, but this is separate?
Yeah, this is separate from the proposal that they have to add the handicap parking and the handicap walkway around back of the building. But they separate handicap entrance to the rear.
Okay.
I think we all agree that the sidewalks need to be treated. And if the roots need to be cut or, or planed back on the parts where it's lifting now, I mean, that was, my feeling was, do that, but, you know.
So it has nothing
Keep the trees.
Not right, not right now.
Nothing is going before the, no.
No, not before the planing, but I'm saying that they're just two separate sidewalk projects. We're not trying to coordinate, okay.
Deputy Mayor
So I, I also, I know Jim, and we all took a look. And I think the tree on the Pepetini side, if it has to be trimmed back or if there's anything that you deem that's dangerous or in any of those trees, I think we should trim them but keep them. They're a lot older than what I, they're older than me, and that's all. So, but I understand, Dave, you know, I, my construction background tells me that we have to do what we have to do. And if, if we, if the trees get killed, they get killed. You gotta do the sidewalk project, we know that. The sidewalks are lifted. So you do what you have to do. But to replace that tree, to get it to any, you know, a large tree would be really expensive. To have no trees there, I think, I think that would, that side of the street would suffer from that.
Yeah. So I will, I will agree with the board. I looked at it, I love the trees being there. I do recognize the one that's closest to Pepetini is a problem. So you need to do the best you can. I know what, you're gonna have to plane down the roots and all that, understood. But yeah, I'm in agreement with, with, with keeping the trees. All right, Dave?
That's fine, whatever you guys want.
All right, all right, very good. All right, moving on to electric scooters. So at our work
Oh, I just want, I have one question about ownership. So I know on the other side of the street, we only have one block, right? One section of sidewalk, and then the landlord owns the rest of that sidewalk. What about on that side?
That side, the original sidewalk, that's from Herb Inn, our first five B, is the village sidewalk. When that building was wrecked, the owner and the construction company added that other sidewalk. I'm assuming so that it was less maintenance, it's easier to take care of. But they have the same issue there, that the trees out front have lifted that sidewalk
Yeah.
Yes.
Where people are tripping over it, but it's not village property.
Right.
But will be replaced.
Well, it's gonna, yeah, that, that one portion, Dave, that he's talking about, that's near the, somewhat near the, the entrance to GHS, GHS Jewelers and Motivate.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about Storm King. I'm talking about in front of Storm King.
Oh, how many feet?
Do we own all the sidewalk in front of Storm King Lounge? Okay, so that's all being replaced?
That would be
Yeah, I understand how the other one works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I get that.
All right.
Yes, because it's much closer to, the building is almost on the road.
Yeah, okay.
Got it. All right, moving on to electric scooters. So I had a couple of residents speak to me about the scooters being used on the sidewalks. They don't have a problem with the scooters on the sidewalks. What they have a problem with is, is that you can't hear them. And when they're walking along, all of a sudden, a scooter couples up upon them. One gentleman told me he was almost hit. But at the same time, he did say that, for the most part, the, the kids who are on the scooters, the electric scooters, are wearing their helmets. Some of them don't. But he said, a decent amount of them do make some noise and advise them, you know, that they're, they're coming on their left, they're coming on their right. The bottom line is, a pedestrian has a right of way, someone who's walking on the sidewalk has the right of way over someone who is on a motorized vehicle or will terminate a vehicle, or a bicycle. So what I did is, last week, I asked the chief to look into, what are the municipalities do to enforce the use of the property? to look into, what are the municipalities do to enforce the use of, the proper use of electric scooters on sidewalks? Before I turn it over to the chief, what he's done so far, we looked at the law, and the law provides right now that you can ride a, if you're less than 10 years old, or maybe 10 years and younger, you can ride a bicycle on the sidewalk. But if you're older than that, you cannot. So.
Is that our, is that code?
That is our code.
That's code.
That's, yeah, I'll pull it up right now, Joe.
No, it's fine.
You doubt me, Joe?
No.
So.
Co-counsel.
So, so I asked the chief to see what other municipalities do. I, I don't, I really don't wanna have to write another law, or you write another law, to enforce electric scooters. So Chief, what have you got for us?
Well, we sent an email out to the majority of the police chiefs in Orange County. I only got two responses back. One was from the city of Middletown Police Chief, and it was just literature, basically about the laws, which is pretty similar to what I already had. And then the other one was from the Village of Monroe Police, and that really was just a copy of the directive that the lieutenant put out to the officers to stop enforcing scooters and such. But there was no statistical information provided, anything like that, or what their procedures were.
So I think, Chief and I were speaking about this last week, and since our counsel doubted me, I'm gonna recite Chapter 53, dash 1, Restrictions on Riding on Sidewalk in the Village Code. No person shall ride or propel any bicycle upon any sidewalk within the Village of Cornwall and Hudson in such a manner as to interfere with any pedestrian thereon.
Right.
No person over 10 years of age shall ride any bicycle upon any sidewalk. So I don't wanna see you on your bicycle over here. So that being said, yes. So I think Chief and I were discussing this, and maybe it's just a campaign of, look, several things on our different media sites, but I also think too, it's this, is being a bit proactive on it, and that is, maybe having the police officers, I don't, look, I don't wanna care, scare the kids, but the bottom line is, giving them the opportunity to, to stop the kids and just say, hey, two things. One is, you gotta wear a helmet. Two, you, you, the pedestrian, someone who's walking has the right of way. You need to, really, what they need, what they're supposed to do is stop, and then walk the scooter around them. And that would be, and that would be the message. And to also, to give them advanced notice, is to make some noise, tell them that someone's behind you. I've experienced it myself, and sometimes actually, you know, some of the houses are, are right on the sidewalk, and, you know, you could step out and potentially get clipped. So unless, did you have any other suggestions? My suggestion is to have our police off, first, our media, you know, our Facebook, our website, but also having our police officers instruct, when they see someone, get the opportunity just to stop them, and just say, I just wanna inform you of this because we don't wanna have to, we don't wanna have to give you a ticket. And we, the first thing is, we don't wanna get someone injured. That's the biggest thing.
I, I also, like what Dave just said about maybe some information going through the schools. I mean, I can definitely pass that through our PTO at COH and at the middle school, you know, maybe create some kind of flyer that is specifying these kind of regulations, and just a, hey, I, you know, look out for this, and this is how we would like our children to stay safe.
Yeah, Chief, you, you do presentate, the police department does a presentation each year for the schools, or have you already done that, right? You do that once a year?
Yeah, well, the first Father's Day is coming up at Cornwall Elementary School at Lee Road, that's coming up actually October 9th. So.
Okay.
Maybe get some literature together to.
Yeah.
The kids.
That would be.
Do that as well.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, we also have a, a few open houses left. The middle school and COH I know hasn't yet. So working through the PTO trust, I could probably get some information. Maybe we should, we could work together on that.
Okay, very good. I think, yes.
Mayor, I think, two things. One, I thought your review of the code also revealed that any bicycle being propelled at a greater than some small, low number of miles per hour requires a bell.
Yes, that, that is, that is true.
Some sort of signaling device might be useful.
Yes, exactly. But what, you know what, that's true. That, that should be, that should be added. Yes, required equipment, Joe, counsel. No person shall ride or propel a bicycle upon any public, public street, highway, or sidewalk in said village unless said bicycle is equipped with a bell, horn, or other warning device.
So that would be nice to, to just amplify that that's a, a best practice, even though it is a law, but a best practice at least. But the other thing is that, going beyond the sidewalks, I've witnessed myself and heard from others about, some of the scooters going down Hudson Street in particular, I, I clocked a kid who looked, he was 11 or 12. He was wearing a helmet, but he was going 35 miles an hour on some kind of, either an E, a small e-bike or a scooter, I can't remember. It was pretty low slung. So like, he was coming into that intersection at the five, you know, Village Square, at 35 miles an hour on this thing where I wouldn't, if I was in an SUV, you couldn't see over the hood, like, so. I would hope that anytime that level of speed is witnessed, that an officer might, might take that opportunity to flag a kid down.
Yes. Joe, you have something for us?
So am I, am I outlaw, riding a lot of outlaw bicycles and, no, no?
We're, we're gonna work on that.
Best practices in education.
Messaging, yes.
Education and best practices.
Yes, okay, very good. Moving on. Yes, Dave, no horses on the sidewalk.
Do we have law about that?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no law that's been on here.
Okay, moving on to the riverfront tree removal. So last week or two weeks ago.
You're up, Dave.
Dave is not a tree killer, let's just start with that. But Dave did apprise us of, one of the willow trees on the waterfront, a large, I know there's three, well, there's, there's actually four willows, right?
Well, there's four, one is.
Right, but what I was getting at was, is that a, a large branch broke off one of the willow trees, and came down, and had someone been underneath that, would have been injured severely. So I asked the board to go down and take a look at the willow trees, because some, there, some of them, there's four of them, one is in very good shape, it's a rather new one, 10 years old. The other three do have some issues, some problems. So I asked the village, each one of the members to take a look at the willow trees, and I'll open it up for the board to discuss that, what we want to do. One of the suggestions that Dave had was, since the will, replace the, take the willow trees down, replace them with another willow tree, since they seem to grow pretty quickly. But I will again open up the board. Let's start with Trustee Galliano.
I don't have much to comment. I would like to see the trees stay, and I would like to see them shaped, pruned, trimmed. That's what, my personal preference.
Trustee Paleota.
Whatever you need to do to keep them safe and keep them there, or the replanning, you know, I didn't realize how quickly they regrew. So that's a great option, too.
Trustee Brain. I'd say, if possible, cut back to the, to the live wood, and make sure that there's no large overhanging branches, even if they look a little stumpy. Willows also grow back from aggressive cutting, so that there would still be foliage for a brief period of time. And then we plant succession trees as soon as possible, so that when it's time to take them out entirely, we have something that's already got a head start. Assuming that that is possible.
Was, did you, did we have an assessment done on that day, on any of them, or just kinda what you saw when, when the limb fell? Not good?
Just, just from my experience, we've been down there, and I had New York Tree Masters down there last fall.
I remember.
And we took all the dead wood out of them last fall.
Right.
And now there's more.
And that amount has about doubled now. And as we said, I got a phone call when that branch came down a couple of weeks ago. Former Officer Pena happened to be sitting down there when it came down, and he called me, he's like, my God, thank God, nobody was sitting there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man.
Because the branch was, it wasn't a branch.
No, no.
It was a section, it was almost three foot in diameter.
Yeah.
That fell from 20 feet air. And all three of those trees have the same issue going on. I'm not sure what happened to them. I personally, I was talking to somebody else about this. It might, might have actually been caused by sandy, when the park was flooded with all the salt water.
Mm-hmm.
The salt water might actually have killed, because everything got pushed up from the ocean, if you remember.
Yes.
Yeah, big surge.
We bring tree masters back in?
I was gonna say.
Trees were underwater for a considerable amount of time.
Let's bring them back in.
So.
That could be what it is.
So Dave, can we, will tree masters, can they determine for us, you know, the, the...
Or even angelotium bar?
What position, you know, how the trees are doing on there? Is it dead on the inside? Can they, or do we have to, we have to get an arborist to do that, like the gentleman up in the town?
I mean, I can have somebody come in and, and do that. I can tell you, most likely they're gonna recommend that for safety, but.
Yeah.
Whatever you guys want, and, you know, if you want me to have them come in and prune all the dead wood out?
I don't think.
I didn't hear that last.
We need to do something.
Yes, no, you were, you were saying, having someone come in and prune all the dead wood, you were saying, do that. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, we, we need to do, but I didn't wanna start pruning it if you guys wanted to have into replacing it.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's prune it, and then, you know what, step two is, let's, let's, I'll meet you down there, we'll pick out a, we'll pick out some spots for some, you know, some other replacement trees.
And e, even a more aggressive pruning into live wood, if it's overhanging and there's concern that that might die back within a year, you know what I mean? If folks agree.
Let us know how much it would cost, Dave.
What's that?
I said, let us know how much it's gonna cost for tree masters.
I will contact them to have them come in.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, moving on to the fire department stipend. Last week, we left off, I asked Charlie to provide an estimate. There were new classes that were gonna be, that were announced for the firefighters that Orange County had put out, and I asked him to provide me the name of the classes and, and the amount of firefighters that would be attending the classes. I haven't received anything from him yet, Rick. Okay. So we'll, we'll put that over, we'll put that over for next month. One of the things I did wanna point out, Rick, is this, is that when I was going over this, when I was going over this with the, with our village treasurer, I just noticed that the, the fire department budget is, guys have used up quite a bit. I mean, I think your balance is about $100,000. And I just, just consider that, I don't, I don't think you, I don't think it was included, but the LoSAP payment, we just got an, we just got the estimate, right?
Yes.
We got an estimate, it's gonna be like 35 grand. So.
Next year?
No, for this year. See, what happens, Rick, is this, come, come December, you, Charlie does the roll-up of the credits. We give it, we give it to him, they figure it out, and then they give us it, they give it to us, the number, the figure in January. So it comes out of the 2025, this current budget. So they, right now, they estimated around 35. So I'm just saying, take that into consideration in regards to the remainder of your balance. But Charlie gets back to me in regards to what classes, how many people, we've gotta, we've, we have to figure that, we have to figure that one out. All right. I didn't put, I failed to put on here, but Mary, we had the, the board discussed in an executive session, because we wanted to talk to, an attorney-client privilege, wanted to talk to Joe about the replacement roof. So what, in regard to that, if it's, two things we're considering. One, the expense, we had an old estimate for a replacement just of a regular asphalt roof, shingle roof, or the metal roof. What we wanna do is, we wanna get an update on the estimates for both of those. If they come in under the $35,000, then we can hop on the Orange County list and use one of their, those contractors. Correct, counsel?
Well, if it's under, if it's under 35, we don't have to follow formal bidding.
Right.
So if it's under 35, we can either, we can either get any appropriate vendor.
Okay.
But I'm suggesting that we check to see if the county bid vendor is still available.
Yes.
Because that was a piggyback bid.
Right.
So we may get the best cost through that option.
Okay. And then if it doesn't, then we have to do the RFP to get the roof replaced. So Dave, you can work on that this week, and get back to us as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
It's just a matter of yes or no with them, right?
I don't know yet.
I know that.
I don't want to put you in the spot, but.
Dave Work and, and Eric D'Nega have done some look into it as well. Maybe they could connect with Dave.
So, okay, I think that's it for other business, so.
Mary, before you go on to some other business, I'll just share a note with you. Our, my former, my car that I had, and the old chipper that we had.
Yes.
Was on the auction site.
Mm-hmm.
The auction went off tonight at 8:00 PM. The Tahoe came in at $18,200, and the wood chipper came in at $4,600.
Wow, 4,000? That chipper is 25 years old, right?
Yeah, but go buy a new one.
I know.
Car came in at $18,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so we did go with the car.
Yeah.
Very good. All right. All right, moving on to your information. Let's see, the planning board meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
What's on the agenda for that, Joe, do you know?
Tomorrow night is the McGregor Woods, that's the large subdivision, and St. Thomas is coming in for a pre-meeting, just to discuss maybe renovating their entrance.
All right, then on October 4th at 8:00 AM, we have the Motivate 5K.
Yes.
Then on September 20th, we have the Dirty Dancing Movie at Town Hall.
Where's that, at the Ice House?
Ooh.
Where is that?
I don't, where is that gonna be?
It's near there, behind it.
Okay, all right.
Are they gonna put the screen up right there?
I think so.
And they're gonna use Ice House for a little while.
All right, our work, next work session meeting is October 6th.
He's in charge of this screen.
The Apple.
Sorry.
Apple time.
Apple time.
Okay, the App, yes, the Apple Time Fair is October 18th. The Villagewide Yard Sale is also October 18th. The Village Board Meeting, our business meeting, is October 20th, and the Cornwall Youth Club Color Bash Run is October 19th at 2:00 PM. Now I'll open it up for public comment.
Wait, you forgot to say that in conjunction.
With the yard sale.
Even though we've already said in the report for the, the department, in conjunction with the yard sale, the bulk cleanup will be on that Monday.
The bulk cleanup is the night.
So if you don't wanna bring your stuff in from the yard sale, you can leave it out for the bulk cleanup.
Yes, okay, so the bulk cleanup is the morning.
Dave does not wanna hear that.
Yeah, and Dave.
I'm here this year.
That's, that's never happened.
No. There's no NICOM, there's no, no, no school.
You're gonna find some great stuff.
Yeah, Dave, yes.
The school was moved up because it's in a location this year that it's better to have it a week or a couple of weeks earlier.
It's not a casino, is it?
No, no, no.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Does anybody have public comment, Rick?
Rick Gianpolo, a tough place in the village. I'm wearing my president of the Cornwall Lions Club hat for this comment. The Lions Club, I wanna plant a seed with you. The Lions Club is looking to support any community-based project that you may have interest in. We collected a lot of money at our golf outing, and we wanna give some back to the community.
Very nice, Rick.
Right, okay.
So if there's anything you ever need from the Cornwall Lions Club, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
You guys are exceptional.
Yes.
Do you want to join us?
Buy a bunch of trees?
I know. I have a lot of meetings. I, I really should be alive.
Absolutely, what it says, okay.
Tomorrow night at the Storm King Lounge, 6:20, if you're interested. The first and the third Tuesday.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other further public comment? Yes, Mary?
I understand what you're saying about the rule, but in the meantime.
I understand what you're saying about the rule, but in the meantime, do I get a?
Oh, yes, you want a tarp?
Blue tarp.
Yes, Dave, um, can you please put a, it doesn't have to be blue, but a tarp on the, which, well, Mary can point out, the extension. Because it's leaking.
Uh, I'll make phone calls and we'll hire someone to do that.
Oh, okay, gotcha, all right. Okay, Mary. Yes, okay. All right.
Agreed.
Looking at the lawyer.
No, no, no further comments, all right, I'm gonna open up to comments by the board. Let's start with Trustee Galliano.
I have no comments.
Ms. Paleota?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Trustee Brain?
I'd just like to point out that the Village Hall staff will be handling the Village Wide Yard Sale this year. So if any residents have any desire to get a list of the locations or to register their own yard sale, please stop into Village Hall. And I knew that without having been told by the clerk. Uh, other than that, I don't think I have, oh, there is one, two other events. Oh, no, we said bulk pickup. Uh, I believe there is still planned to be a performance, or not a performance, a, a small musical performance and a screening of a short, short documentary regarding the Storm King decision at Donahue Memorial Park on October twelfth.
Yes.
Other than that, uh, thank you all for all the hard work you have done this past month.
Anything, Dave?
No, I'm good.
Um, I just wanted to note, I think this is our, I forget how many years the uh, yard sale is. But the person who spearheaded that was Barbara Gazda. And I just wanted to say thank you to her for starting it. She gave up doing it last year, and she's looking for someone to take the torch, to pass the torch to, um, to spearhead it. But at this point, the village by default has done that, and I thank the front office staff for taking care of that, because they've been fielding all the calls about it. And we'll gather um the information and the locations of where, uh, where it'll be, which houses. So, other than that, I have nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you.